I apologize. Let's see, is that a little better? Speak a little. Sometimes it's too light, too loud. Okay. Welcome. I would like to call to order the May ninth, 2022 regular meeting of the Willoughby Eastlake City Schools Board of Education. This meeting is being held in accordance with section three-three-one-three point one-five of the Ohio Arby's Code. Mr. Charnello, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Boxler?
President.
Mr. Roskis?
Here.
Mr. Vettori?
Here.
Mrs. Menzer?
Here.
Mrs. Baer?
Here.
We have a forum?
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would like to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. We do have a few presentations this evening, which were pre-planned, and we will honor their invitation and allow them to present first, at which time we will transition to our discussion of the recent election and its impact on our district. To ensure all are aware of the way these meetings operate, we want to share the following. Number one, prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and treasurer for information concerning the agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. Board members are not permitted, per Ohio Meetings Act and Sunshine laws, to conduct conversations regarding board business outside of a public meeting. Tonight will be the first time in which we, as a board, can conduct, as a whole, conversations related to all items on the agenda. For example, we have not been able to discuss the election results as a group this evening. This will be our first opportunity to do so. This meeting's agenda is always available through the district's website for public viewing prior to board meetings. The community members can always email the board with questions or come and participate in the public comment portion of our meeting. The public comment provides an opportunity for the community to address the school board directly. To participate in public comments, participants would sign up before the meeting. When signing up, you are also provided a copy of our public participation policy, and participants are asked to abide by those requirements. As the meeting progresses, you will see the board discuss items and not vote. Those items are marked with an asterisk on our agenda. These items are a part of our consent calendar. To ensure our meetings move along, we vote to approve all of these items at the end of the meeting. Other items without an asterisk are voted on individually for a variety of reasons, which are outlined in our policies. Lastly, the way in which we conduct our meetings is outlined in our policies, and you can find these on the Board of Education tab on the district's website. We will now move on to our agenda, and we're going to go to item two A, approval of our agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Menzer. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Discussion? I did have a question. How many participants do we have this evening?
One.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Mr. Charnello, please take a roll.
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Okay. We'll move on to our community engagement portion, and Dr. Thompson, if you could do some introductions.
Sure. This is probably my favorite board meeting. Well, these two consecutive board meetings are my favorite board meetings. And anyone who doubts the future of our community, of our state, of our country, I think this is a compelling reason to keep faith. So this is one of my favorite nights, and each year we have the honor of recognizing the top ten students, seniors actually, from each high school. And tonight, we have the seniors from South High School. And they have continued to show a tremendous amount of excellence and dedication throughout their school years. And on behalf of the Willoughby Eastlake Schools, I'd like to congratulate you and your parents and your families for their hard work. Because we know it's not just students who are working hard, although, yes, you are the ones taking the tests and all that. But I know your parents were on you from little kids all the way growing up to instill discipline and good study skills, et cetera, et cetera. So it is a chance to honor not only our students, but their parents as well. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Patrick. Where is Mr. Patrick? Okay. Mr. Patrick, our principal from South High School. That's a very nice suit, Mr. Patrick.
Thank you very much, sir. Madam President, Madam Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Thompson and Mr. Charnello, I have the privilege as South High School's principal to present to you the Willoughby South top ten senior students of the class of 2022. These students earned the right to be here, academically having the highest grade point averages in their high school careers. As much of an accomplishment as that is, the additional things they've done over the last four years set them apart truly. Starting alphabetically, I will introduce each student. They're going to come up to the front. I'm going to say some nice things about them that they have earned. And then they'll receive a plaque from Mr. Miller, who was South's eleventh and twelfth grade assistant principal. Afterwards, we'll all go outside in the front lobby, get a picture, and let the meeting continue. Our first top ten student is Ella Gallagher. Ella describes herself as open-minded, friendly, and hard-working. She likes to hang out with friends, is a member of the National Honor Society, and she's been on the principal and dean's list and has already earned her associate's degree. She's a full-time CCP student and has also taken AP classes. She's undecided in her future career. She's thinking about spending another year at Lakeland and moving into the health field. Ladies and gentlemen, Ella Gallagher. Our next student is James Johnson. James describes himself as confident, determined, and ambitious.
Oh, you have to stay up here now.
Oh, yeah. With that kind of intro, you've got to stay up front. He's a long-distance runner and enjoys researching more about the sport to become better. He was captain of our cross-country team, a varsity wrestler, is on the track team. He's been on the principals and dean's list. Every quarter or semester, he's gone to South or Lakeland. He's a member of Phi Theta Kappa honors. He's a scholar-athlete every year in high school, and he will have earned his associate's degree by the time he graduates. James has multiple honors, AP, and CCP classes. Actually, more than I care to read, there were so many, thank you. He plans on attending Miami University or John Carroll University and wants to enter the career of financial managing and also wants to coach. Ladies and gentlemen, James Johnson. Next, we have Nathaniel Johnson. By the way, I didn't take these pictures, they were provided to me. Nate describes himself as determined, conscientious, daring, flashy, and short.
Not sure. No, not true.
Nate's part of the cross-country team, swim team, track team, as well as a boy scout. You an Eagle Scout?
Yes.
He's also an Eagle Scout, pardon me. He's been on the principals' list all semesters of high school, dean's list as well, four years as a cross-country and track runner, a year at varsity swim, and a presidential scholar candidate. He has taken multiple CCP, AP, and honors courses, plans on going to Cleveland State, and hopes to become a cardiologist. And this, ladies and gentlemen, is Nathaniel Johnson. Next, we have Owen Johnson. I wasn't sure if I saw him, if I saw him or not, but I'll still read. Yeah, it's three Johnsons in a row. Owen describes himself as empathetic, fashionable, and eccentric. In his spare time, he likes to do photography, videography, and editing. He was part of Penn Ohio, a United Way volunteer, in our high school key club. He's been on honor roll, president's role. Doesn't generally like to be recognized, apparently. I was going to say, sorry, buddy, but he stood me up. He went to Washington Elementary through our Zenith program and has been in honors ever since. He wants to be in photography and graphic design. He's not sure about his college of choice. Owen Johnson. Next, we have Cameron Johnston. It was close. Kami describes herself as adventurous and motivated. In her spare time, she sings, spends time with friends, and works. Her extracurriculars include choir, singing lessons, NHS, swim team, student government, drama. She's on the dean's list at Lakeland, and she is the head... Wait a minute, is that right? Nope, wrong person, sorry. She'll be attending the University of Wyoming, where she will pursue a major in marketing and a minor in communications, journalism, and social media. Ladies and gentlemen, Cameron Johnston. Will not be a Johnson next. Our next student is Nicholas Madormo. Nick describes himself as hard-working, vibrant, and unconventional. He enjoys playing soccer, golfing, riding his bike, watching The Office, nice choice, and eating waffles at Waffle House with friends. Nick was on our varsity soccer team, bowling, tennis, club soccer, and National Honor Society. He's been on the principals' list, the dean's list, at Lakeland and at South. He's a scholar-athlete, was our offensive player of the year, an all-conference player, and has his associates of arts and associates of science degrees already. He has taken multiple AP classes and plans on attending V. Ohio State University next year, majoring in the field of accounting and/or finance. Ladies and gentlemen, Nicholas Madormo. Next, we have Madeline Maholen. Maddie describes herself as determined, kind, and focused. She enjoys going shopping, taking hikes, walking her dog, and getting coffee with friends. She spends a lot of time downtown, in downtown Willoughby also, and is the head cook at Westall's Alibi and Hush. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
She was one of the principal, she was on the principals' list ever since her freshman year, the dean's list at Lakeland Community College, and she is an AP scholar. Maddie has plans of attending Ohio University in the fall to study political science and economics on a pre-law track. In her future, she hopes to be a criminal defense lawyer. Ladies and gentlemen, Madeline. Next, we have Irene Rosenberg. Irene describes herself as resilient, driven, and curious. She enjoys reading, playing tennis, and traveling. She has been part of South's girls' varsity tennis team, academic decathlon, and National Honor Society. Irene is an AP scholar with distinction, has received the Scholar-Athlete Award, and is a Division One honors champion and an overall third in state with Acadak. She will be attending V. Ohio State University with career plans in biomedical research scientists. Ladies and gentlemen, Irene Rosenberg. And though he's not with us tonight, next up is Dominic Vettori. Dominic describes himself as trying to excel at everything he does, even those things he doesn't like but is compelled to do. That sounds like a pretty good way to go. He enjoys fitness and travel, especially his family vacations. Football and wrestling have been highlights of his time at South. It's taught him a lot about fitness and competition. He's also a member of the National Honor Society, the Key Club, received the Mike Morris Award, awarded by his football coaches for character and loyalty. He was captain of our football team, district qualifier in wrestling, and received the Scholar-Athlete Award in both football and wrestling. He has enlisted in the U.S. Navy and will utilize the GI Bill to compete his undergraduate work. Finally, Dominic competed and earned an opportunity to be in the Navy's Special Operations Program. Ladies and gentlemen, Dominic Vettori.
Since when do we have twenty-five-year-olds that are seniors in high school? Look, he looks like he's twenty-five years old.
He looked that way when he went to Edison.
That's impressive.
Last but not least, is Grace Woodcock. Who is in uniform tonight. Grace describes herself as determined and funny. Her friends say differently about the funny part. Did I get that right? She enjoys playing sports, both inside and outside of school, and has been part of the softball and basketball programs at South, as well as the National Honor Society. Grace has been an all-conference basketball award winner all four years of high school, a scholar-athlete for both softball and basketball. She's an AP scholar and plans on attending V. Ohio State University in the fall, undecided in her major at this time. Ladies and gentlemen, Grace Woodcock. If the members of our top ten could stand one more time? Do you have anything you want to ask?
Madam President, could we take like a two-minute break so that we can take the students outside? We want to get some pictures. I'm sure you want to get some pictures together. And then we'll get some pictures, your parent, opportunity for parents or grandparents to take pictures as well. And then if you want to come back in after the pictures and hang out and stay at a board meeting, it's a lot of fun. I would highly recommend it. But if not, you can leave at that point, too.
We can take a ten-minute recess.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. A little less shock this time. We'll be resuming our meeting. Nick, please make mention or note of the time. Okay, so we'll go back to our agenda, and we're still under community engagement. Dr. Thompson, can you introduce our next presentation?
Thank you, Madam President. This year, we began the planning phases for an educational option for students in personal crisis. Most of these students are in a state of distress due to emotional needs and can respond by showing aggressive or disruptive behaviors in school. The end result of this is, quite frankly, they're just simply not successful. So we wanted to address that and give ourselves and our students more options. So the new program we're calling PACE, which stands for Providing Alternative Choices in Education. It's designed to assist students in crisis by addressing their educational and emotional needs and giving them the support they need to be successful in school. This evening, we are joined by Gina Kaverin, our curriculum director, Keith Murphy, who is the new director of our program, and Eric Frye, our North High School principal, as they're going to give us an update on PACE. These people have been instrumental in planning phases of our program, and I would like to sincerely thank them for their hard work. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to the team.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Thompson, it's a privilege to be here tonight to talk about PACE, Providing Alternative Choices in Education. I think it's fitting that, you know, on the one side, on the one hand, we're able to start the evening celebrating the high school careers of kids who traditional high school has worked fabulously for. And now we get an opportunity to turn the attention to some of the kids who need us just as much on the other end of the spectrum. And so that's kind of what PACE is going to be all about. So before we get too far into talking about what PACE is, we thought it was important to differentiate between a couple of the other alternative programs that we already offer in the district. The first of which is Success Academy. Success Academy is a program geared towards primarily middle school students but can be ninth and 10th grade students as well.
Is it on?
Now it is. I apologize. Sorry about that. So, like I said, it's primarily for middle school students. It's students who don't fit the traditional model of education. They maybe they're more hands-on. Maybe they aren't as social. Maybe they have difficulties at home that are getting in the way of their education. Maybe it's interacting with adults in a positive way at school. For whatever reason, they need additional support, and we are recognizing it early enough, and we are intervening in a way that is having a lot of success for these students. Success Academy is a smaller program. It's housed at NCI Willoughby. Right now, there are 19 students in Success Academy. Every year, students are recommended for the program through their homeschools, and then the team decision at the high school is, or the middle school is made, I should say, with the family, and then students then can find their way to Success Academy. The other program that we have currently is Bridge to Success, or BTS as it's commonly referred to. BTS is geared more towards high school students, and it is also centered around the idea of credit recovery. So students begin high school, and as you know, different from middle school, they have to pass classes to accumulate credit in order to graduate. In middle school, they are promoted from one year to the next largely socially, although academics obviously play a huge role, but nothing is holding them back from going from one grade to the other like it does in high school. So if a student, for whatever reason, falls behind academically by the end of their freshman year, they are dramatically, their chances of dropping out dramatically increase. So we want to intervene in the fastest way possible. So for these students, typically, again, traditional high school doesn't work. So BTS is an online program. It's actually a hybrid program because although the content is provided online, students do go to a school, a site that is housed at, again, NCI Willoughby, and they are educated there for two hours a day by staff members that are helping them progress through their online curriculum. Again, it's, the focus is credit recovery. The problem is, is that that leaves, and as a high school principal, I can passionately and personally attest to this, that leaves a segment of the population that doesn't have a home, but it can't be at the homeschool. And that's because the behavior of the student we're talking about has gotten to the point where it isn't only impacting their education, it's now impacting everybody else's education, too. So we need to find a way to educate these kids in a setting where they're going to feel valued and supported but is separate from the traditional high school setting. And that has led us to PACE. And at that point, I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Kaverin, who is going to talk about the process that we went through to develop this program that we're showing you tonight.
Thank you, Eric. So when Dr. Thompson asked us to explore the idea of developing PACE to meet the needs of these students, we put together a steering committee. And we had 32 members on that steering committee, and that included central office administrators, building administrators, general education teachers, special education teachers, parapros and secretaries from across the district. That steering committee had then eight subcommittees. And so each of those subcommittees had the responsibility to do research, and we ended up having an academic programming committee, behavior supports, facilities, staffing, student supports, and we also had a group that wanted to survey students and parents to get their input. We made three site visits. We visited Mentor High School. We visited Olmsted Falls as well as Lakewood, and then we researched 10 other programs. What we found, however, when we were researching other programs is that most of those programs were geared toward credit recovery programs and not so much the high-at-risk youth that we're talking about. We also did a facility walkthrough, and at the end of the presentation, you will see a floor plan of the facility at Willoughby Middle where we're going to house PACE. As part of our work, we did do a survey. So we asked students who are currently members at BTS and Success Academy some questions about how they felt about their education now that they were in an alternative program versus what it was like when they were at their regular school. And then we also surveyed middle school and high school parents across the district, and we had 471 parents respond to our survey. For the student results, one of the things that I thought was most interesting is that these students were, as Mr. Frye mentioned, they were very unmotivated in their homeschool. They would sit in class, not complete their work, not complete homework, not necessarily engage. And yet, once they became students at Success Academy and Bridge to Success, in red up here, we see that 93% of those students said they are very motivated to succeed right now. And also, 97% said their parents want them to succeed, and they recognize that their teachers also want them to succeed. So they did a turnaround in their own attitude toward education based on these small groups that they were able to be in. Part of the survey asked them to rank the life skills which they felt were the biggest priorities for students to acquire in middle school and high school. And it was really interesting in looking at the research that the skills that the parents and the students chose as most important to them were very similar, as you see up here: self-motivation, self-confidence, effective communication, trustworthiness, problem-solving. Very similar to what parents wanted for their students and what the students wanted for We also asked parents to provide their ideas on what do these students need to be the most successful? What kind of supports do they need? And at the top of the list, there were about 20, but they ranked mental health counseling, an alternative education setting, small class sizes, life skills coaching and work-study programs, blended learning and community-based activities, as well as flexible schedules as being very important supports for the students. The students were asked what goals were important to them, and you can see on the screen that graduating from high school and finding a job that pays well, having good health and being able to explore careers were all very important to these students who once were not succeeding in school. The only difference between the student results and the parent results here were that while students, 95% of them said that a job that pays well is one of their top priorities, parents actually wanted them to have very good, strong, healthy relationships with other adults, and they had ranked that a little bit higher than the job skills. So now we're going to tell you a little bit more about an overview of PACE. Mr. Frye and then Mr. Murphy is going to share some information.
Yes, thank you. So again, we're talking about students who exhibit behaviors that are impeding not just their educational opportunities, but they're impeding the educational opportunities of others, too. And also, obviously, these behaviors are exhibiting themselves, are showing themselves for a lot of reasons. Some of it is the way that they were, some things they experienced in their childhood. Some of it is, you know, mental illness. Some of it is social, emotional issues. We've got all these various issues. Some of it is just defiant behavior. And so what we need to do is, like I said, find a place for these students that demonstrate these behaviors to get their education, but at the same time, not get in the way of the other kids. But the point is, too, is, and this is something we have to be clear about, you know, we have to make this a program that, once the kids get there, they buy into and see the value of, because a lot of these kids are issues, are attendance issues as well. And so getting that, building, you know, a new school for them is not the magic bullet that's necessarily going to solve it. The hard work is what's going to happen in those four walls. And fortunately, whoops, sorry, excuse me. Fortunately, in one of our site visits, we were able to find one of these amazing individuals that run, or that currently runs the program that we thought was the most successful of the ones we visited, which is the Menter program. And that person is Keith Murphy, and he's here tonight, and he's going to speak more specifically about some of the things that will be provided in these, in this program.
Good evening. The goal of the program is to meet the specialized needs of students who are not on track economic success due to behaviors that impede their learning and learning of others. Forgive me, once a while I will rassle you twice a year, so please bear with me. It's not for me yelling at my kids, I promise. We will provide a flexible environment. The focus is on helping the students obtain a high school diploma while also addressing their specific learning needs. Life skills and taking advantage of alternate pathways is outlined by the Ohio Department of Education. Other aspects of this program is going to include support with life skills such as financial literacy and workplace behaviors as well as work-study options. They could also take advantage of our community-based volunteer options or job shadowing to learn job skills. The primary reason of the students' need to specialize in environment is because they have behaviors that impede their learning and relationships with others. We will provide wraparound services with our PACE staff and outside resources as appropriate to address any behavior or mental health concerns. Students will also focus on goal-setting beyond a high school diploma, so they can identify their next steps in life, and we can help them prepare for post-secondary education, employment, or enlistment in the military, depending on what their needs are.
So the referral process. So the primary motivator for getting us, getting students into the alternative school is going to be an expulsion determination. When a student gets to the point of expulsion, just so you know the difference, principals at the building level can suspend a student for up to 10 days for violations of the Code of Conduct. Beyond 10 days, a recommendation has to be made to the superintendent for an expulsion. Expulsion can be anything from an 11th day all the way up to 80 more days. And so that's at the superintendent's discretion. A lot of times, students have special education protections and 504 protections that require us to still provide educational opportunities for those kids if they are, would have been otherwise expelled from school. So it behooved us to come up with a process where we could keep these kids in-house in a more cost-effective way and have complete control over this process. And so expulsion would be the most likely way. But also understand that, you know, we might have a situation where the team decides, we are heading down this road. We have seen this happen with other students prior to getting to this point. Let's, let's understand what we're really talking about here, and let's decide as a team if this is what's best for your student. And so the team at the building level could make that determination as well. What it will not be is a quick knee-jerk reaction of, you've messed up a couple of times, or even you got in a fight or two, and now you're off to the alternative school. That's not the idea. The idea is to reserve these spots for the students that are the most high incidence, if you will. And so, and the other thing, too, that I want to point out is, you know, I know that their connotations are all negative when you talk about an alternative school, but one thing Mr. Murphy didn't get a chance to elaborate on, and I know that he would love to if you were giving him the, if you give him the opportunity to, is he would talk to you about all the students that attended his program and at first fought tooth and nail to not have to go, but then, once they got there, realized they didn't want to leave. And so I, it is my vision for our district and our kids that we can have that, too. I'd like to have those success stories where we talk about these kids. On the front end, it's a crisis, and on the back end, it could be a celebration. And so that's what we're looking to do. So this is the floor plan of the facility. Like we said, it's going to be housed in space that's currently wedged between Willoughby Middle and the old South High School and the new South High School. It's currently undergoing some renovations. As you can see, there's a main area that's set aside for the high school and a separate location that's set aside for the middle school, administrative space, small breakout rooms as well. So order-ing furniture, making it look nice. The idea is this is a nice inviting space, and we want, you know, my experience as principal at North in seeing how kids have taken care of the new building since we've been there, if you build a nice place, they'll respect it. All right? And I know there have been some high-profile TikTok challenges and whatnot that have drawn some negative light to our restrooms and things like that, but overall, our kids have been fantastic in our new building, and I know these kids will be in this as well. So, thank you. That's a very fast overview of PACE, of a lot of work that has gone into, a lot of months. And at this point, I'd like to open it up, we'd like to open it up to the board for any questions.
Thank you very much for a thorough presentation. I'm sure there are questions. Who would like to go first?
I'll go.
So how do you, thank you for the presentation. Thank you very much. I had heard of it, but the first time I really got to get some in-depth, even superficial in your, from your perspective, that's very deep information for me. So how do you, how do you graduate? Or how do you move, once you're in, how do you, how do you leave? If you want to.
Yes. Do you want to address that?
How do you leave the program?
Yeah.
So typically, what happens is, for my seven, eight years of being at Menter, the kids don't want to leave. The goal, when I first started the program, was to reintegrate them back in the classroom. That's the goal. You know, teach them behaviors, get them caught up academically, teach them life skills, social skills. The problem with this was, they loved the program so much, they didn't want to leave, not one of them. And when Eric and the team came to the high school, they asked my graduation rate, and I said, I've been doing this seven, eight years, I can count on one hand the people that did not graduate from this program.
Okay.
It's a program that's unique. They buy into the system. They buy into it as a family, where they're to help each other. The goal initially was to get them back in high school. Like I said, they don't want to leave. We work on them academically all day so they catch up with their credits, kind of like your BTS. That's how we started with Menter.
Okay. So they graduate from?
They will graduate from their homeschool.
Homeschool.
Their homeschool. So North will be North and South will be South.
And they'll still be able to participate in activities.
Correct.
But I think you're getting the sense of, and this is why we hired Mr. Murphy, what I absolutely did not want and do not want is a holding, a holding facility for kids who are bad, and we just cast them off. That is not the purpose of this program. As it was not the purpose of Success Academy, this is not the purpose of PACE. So, well, I really feel like some of you that might know Mr. Melvin, for example, at South High School, he's an incredible teacher. He's going to be one of our lead teachers in the program. So we have strong staff members who are committed to this. Mr. Murphy understands the concept of what we're trying to achieve. These kids will graduate at a much, much, these kids, most of these kids probably would not graduate if we didn't have, if we didn't put this program together. So I think, and, but I think it's also going to benefit other students that maybe were in classrooms with kids that were disrupting the classroom that aren't there anymore. So I think we can get these kids' behavior under control, and if they want to return to the normal school, they'll have that option, but I do suspect that a lot of them will have maybe success. for the first time in their educational career, and the thought of leaving probably is not enticing to them. I suspect in a few years, our biggest problem or challenge is going to be, we need more space because we need to expand the slots.
I had a question. So you had mentioned multiple times, the team at the building level would identify and/or potentially discuss to intervene prior to expulsion. What is that team comprised of?
So that would, that would generally start with the administration. At that point, you'd be dealing with a student multiple times, probably in the neighborhood of twenty to thirty log entries, which is astronomical. Most students go through high school and never get one log entry. So to have that many in a short period of time, it's crisis mode. So you would assemble an IAT, which would be a meeting of an administrator, you know, the parents, the student, a counselor, a regular ed teacher, maybe the school psychologist as well. And so, but you, you wouldn't put it out there on the table necessarily as an option in lieu of something else. It would almost be, this is going to be the last resort. This is where we're going. So let's consider if we should be proactive about it as opposed to making it punitive at an expulsion hearing.
That leads me to my next question. As it stands today, once you're, once you have an expulsion, what type of academics does that student who has been expelled receive?
Go ahead, Mr. Dr. Thompson.
Well, it depends. So, and this is very confusing to the community. Let's say a student commits an egregious act. If that student is on an IEP, there must be a manifest hearing to determine if the, whatever behavior they exhibited was not a manifestation of their disability. If it is a manifestation of their disability, then they cannot be disciplined. That's very frustrating to the community and to the staff and to the whole school at large. If it, even if it is not a manifestation of their disability, they can only be suspended for ten days, the entire school year. So that really, you'll see inequities and discipline happen, and youth, and community members throw up their hands, rightfully so, because they don't understand, and they think, I know that kid was in a fight, for example, and he's back in school two days later. Well, that's probably because he's already been suspended for eight days, and there's only two days left in the, in our list of options. We're becoming increasingly frustrated by this reality. So that's why this program was born. So, for example, when I'm in an expulsion hearing, there are kids I don't want to expel. Now I have options. I have an option from my vantage point of where I can reassign students. Building principals can intervene before it even gets to expulsion if, like Mr. Frye stated, we're seeing this pattern that is pretty egregious developing. And currently, there's really no option. They really don't have any option. So we think this will help a lot. We've seen it work in other schools, the research supports it. I, I think this will be a great success for us. And we've seen, I've watched some videotapes, Mr. Murphy's being, being...
Modest?
Modest, thank you, being modest. We, we got to watch videos of his students talking about just how much they loved the program and specifically, Mr. Murphy. So, now those kind of, and that's Mr. Melvin too. Those kind of people are rare, they're hard to find, and we have two of them and more. So I really think we can change the lives of those students and positively impact all the rest of our kids too. And they might not ever even know it, but they'll be impacted by not experiencing some of the things they might have otherwise experienced.
Have we gone through a process to identify students for next school year? And if so, how many?
So, yes, we, in each building, we're going over who would be the students that would start. And they would be from, and we've started to have these discussions at recent expulsion hearings, letting parents know that this would likely be an option as well. But the idea is to start small. There's the potential to cap the high school program between the two schools at forty students and the middle school program at twenty, but we certainly wouldn't open the doors with those numbers. It'll be small numbers at first, let the program build itself a little bit as it's going, and let Mr. Murphy and his staff develop their routines and policies and procedures so that as we bring more students in, they can teach each other how things work around here.
One more quick one. Oh, sorry.
How many staff members will you have?
And how are they comprised?
Yeah, number of staff members.
Dr. Thompson, do you want to do that?
So we have, we've, of course, like everything, we work through our negotiated agreement. Hats off to the union. They were extremely reasonable, Mr. McPhee, supportive of the idea because I think they know it's in the best interest of all the staff at large. So we'll start with four academic teachers. They're going to be special education teachers, is that correct, Gina?
One general education.
One general and three special education teachers. So that we, and they're highly qualified in all the subject areas, so that each subject area is covered. As we grow, we're able to hire tutors to help us if we need to expand our staffing, and that allows us the ability to maintain a certain, stay in a reasonable budget. So we'll expand as we need to expand, but that's what we'll start with along with an administrator, which is Mr. Murphy. And so it'll start, like Mr. Frye said, it'll start small, but I think it'll grow, I think it'll grow pretty fast. I suspect at some point, we'll be having discussion about, how do we expand the program, would be my guess.
Dr. Thompson?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain again how the funding is working to open this alternative school?
Sure. So whenever, whenever we move students, we, you're going to reduce the need over here and move the asset over here. We're doing the best we can to move the shells and not add additional staffing. But overall, we do have some additional staff members added as a result of this program. I would tell you though, at the end of the day, that additional expenditure is worth every penny as we, I think it's imperative that we keep our schools safe, keep parents confident that our schools are safe, give our students reassurances that our schools are a place they want to be. And so, you know, I think keeping students in our schools is about dollars at the end of the day as well. So that's where the, the funding comes out of the general fund though, to answer your question directly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had a question about update. So what's the plan to kind of keep us up to speed on the progress and the, and how it's, what we envision always, sometimes as a former classroom teacher, Plan A usually becomes Plan Q pretty quickly. So what's the timeframe for update that we should expect as a board?
Well, we're going to hold our board meetings from now on there during the school day.
Okay.
So they're going to be in the audience and be able to interact with you.
I would like to participate in all activities.
We will continue to provide the updates in the board reports each week that you receive from Dr. Thompson to make sure that you're apprised along the way.
And this is to start this fall?
That's correct, this fall.
I know I'm done. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time and your efforts, it's much appreciated.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
I do want to thank the three of you. You can tell just from the presentation, the amount of work that went into this. And Gina Kevren led that team, but they all worked. Those three were the key leaders in taking an idea from inception to reality. So thank you, you guys did a marvelous job.
Thank you. So we'll continue on in our community, community engagement section with the three C, board president, Q and A. At this point, we always answer or address the public comment from the previous meeting, previous month's meeting. We had three speakers last month. Dr. Thompson, if you could help me, we had two individuals speak on behalf of a request for a drone for South High School.
Correct. So we had the quest, the quest, or the request from Mr. Galetti, I believe is how you pronounce his name. And he stated that the North High School band had been told that the board, been told by the board that they were not able to use a drone for marching band, and the boosters would like to use the drone for instructional purposes. That was generally what he said. The board has not been asked, or been requested, the board, to my knowledge, at least in the last ten years, and I don't think there were drones before then, at least I don't think there was. Both band directors are not in favor of the use of drones, and they have reached out to this particular band. He's a roadie. He helped set up for, he works for the North Band, or volunteers for the, for the North Band. And a well-intentioned request, but not a request that's currently being supported by the, by either band director.
So that's been resolved. We had a member of the community ask multiple questions in regards to a special education process. I believe that's been handled in direct communication already with the individual.
Right. That issue has been resolved. If you'd like me to go through every one of the questions, I could, but it's pretty extensive. But there have been meetings. Mrs. Bowers, are you in the house?
Yes.
Now that issue has been completely resolved, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then we had a few questions regarding OSHAA. And it was regards to the expense, as well as to the voting and what they were voting on.
Sure. So a lot of recent questions about the Ohio High School Athletic Association, and in particular, cis males, cis meaning that is your born gender, cis males transitioning to female and participating in female sports and the potential advantage or disadvantage that could occur as a result of that. Just some general information. That policy's been in place from the OHSA since 2015. To date, there's been less than one percent of student athletes who have been approved. So the process for a transgender cis male to participate in female athletics, A, they have to be approved by the Ohio High School Athletic Association. They must be on hormone suppression therapy for one year, and their hormone levels have to be checked throughout the season that they participate in. So less than one percent of those that have applied for admittance to female sports have been actually admitted. There is voting that's going on between May first and May fifteenth. The voters are high school principals and athletic directors across the state of Ohio. And there is no change to that policy. There's other policy changes, but nothing that relates to transgender participation in athletics.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. We will now move on to item three D, public comment. Mr. Tarnello?
Tony Syracuse. Thank you. Please forgive me, I type better emails than I do public speaking, so.
That's fine.
I had to write everything down.
And sir, just for your notice, once again, your timer is there for you as well as on the screen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tony Syracuse, three, four, three, zero, three, Iris Lane, Eastlake. I'm here to talk about our latest failed school levy. Myself and a few others have been challenged with trying to dispel misinformation about our school levies for a few years now on social media, and is becoming increasingly frustrated to do so. We don't tell people how to vote because that would be wrong, but we do try and make sure the correct information is out there so voters can make an informed decision. Our district has a real problem on their hands, and I have no idea how to fix it. Emergency levy after emergency levy is giving people voter fatigue. At some point, you have to say enough is enough. Bite the bullet and combine these levies into a permanent one. I know you tried it before and it failed, but you cannot keep going on the ballot every single vote. It's not working. There's so much animosity towards the school system, board, and superintendent. Drastic changes need to be made. I need to make you aware of what I think is the misinformation going on in our district or simply the reason some people are voting no for our levies. Number one is mismanagement of funds. I would assume the new board has had an opportunity to look at all the financials of the school by now. Has anyone found any mismanagement of funds? If so, we'd like to know about it. Number two, administrative bloat. The superintendent and the board makes too much money. Teachers make too much money for only working a hundred and eighty days a year. I don't agree with that, but I'm just letting you know that a lot of people are saying the same thing. Number three, this new Taj Mahal board office costs a fortune to buy and to maintain. Number four, you received seven point seven million dollars in CARES Act money. I don't know if that number is correct or not, but that's what I was told. Where did it go? Number five, the board doesn't care that you are taxing seniors out of their homes. Number six, the schools are taking seventy percent of their property taxes. Number seven, our school rating is below average on state testing and on Zillow for property buying purposes. And number eight, this was an emergency levy and there shouldn't be emergencies anymore. I don't know the solution. Someone had suggested the school district income tax, STID, SDIT. Could that be a viable solution? I do know that you need to go straight to the voters. You can't just put signs out, send postcards in the mail, or make videos that people need to search for online. You need to go to events in the community. You need to do what you do best. Educate them on what you are doing and need to do. You need to make, you need to make apples-to-apples comparisons between our district and others of our size on per-student spending, teacher salaries, administrative salaries, and property taxes. If you wait for the voters to come to you, they won't. They will continue to get their misinformation online through social media. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then, just a reminder, we always respond to all public comment at the next meeting. It's part of our policy. Mr. Tarnello? Do you have anyone else?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Okay, so now we'll move on to item four. A, our board members' business and our board discussion. So as we begin our discussion portion, there's a few things I would like to ask the board for. Once again, I want to remind the community, this is the first time that we, as a, as a group of five, can actually discuss this to be in compliance with a lot of laws and regulations. So this is our first conversation. I wanted to kind of ask the board, I've prepared just a little bit of information, and on the behalf of the board, I would ask for your grace so I can provide just some high-level info as to the communication that we were allowed to do, as well as some timeline stuff from January till now, and then also ask Dr. Thompson's support and help in explaining some of the legality of it. So if you're okay for me to issue you just a quick summary, is that okay? Okay. And then after that, obviously, the floor will be open for discussion, and I also have a presentation for an idea that supports the board resolution also on the agenda tonight. So as, this is our first time with our community, I want to provide some information just in case to those that maybe this is the first meeting that you've participated in, watched from home and/or attended. We have four new board members out of five. Mr. Vettori was sworn in in October. Mr. Boxler, Mrs. Menzer, and I were sworn in in January. And on January third, prior to us three new board members being sworn in, we were provided notification that the individuals that comprised the leadership team of the levy committee were stepping down. Now, this is another thing that I feel we need to provide explanation on. The levy committee is completely separate from the school. It is not sponsored by the school, it's not driven by the school. It is completely separate. In fact, there are a political action committee, which is registered with the Board of Education, or elections, I apologize, and they're not run by us. In essence, it's a volunteer structure similar to PTAs or boosters. And these types of organizations are true labors of love and can be very demanding on individuals' times and oftentimes have leadership changes occur. So in January, our levy committee, who's the one that puts up signs and does other things, is not a part of the board or the district, essentially had to rebuild itself one hundred percent. And if you have questions with what happened with regard to the levy committee... And if you have questions with what happened with regard to the levy committee, you would have to reach out directly to the levy committee to get that information, because that's their information to share. On Jan- January 26th, so, by the way, we were sworn in. This new board body of five took over on January 10th, and on January 26th, we had our first meeting to discuss our levy. And we had on our agenda, and you can see it on our website, we had up our agenda to discuss the levy and to vote to place it for May 3rd for to be put on the Board of Elections to have it on the ballot. And then we were also provided by our administration information about what we, as a new board, should know about our participation in levies, the promotion and discussion, and our involvement in levy campaigns. And to ensure that it's really discussed, because Dr. Thompson, you presented it to us at that time, can you please submit some information about the guidance through our attorneys was given to you, to us, and discuss the Bellbrook case for a minute?
Yeah, so, school districts have been dealt a significant change in the way we could legally, or at least as the law is currently interpreted, interact in passage or working to pass levies. Historically, you would have seen me, for example, at leading multiple community meetings. You would have seen the treasurer leading multiple community meetings. You would have seen the board engaged in those types of meetings. Around the November timeframe, November 2021, I attended a conference along with probably 200 or 300 other superintendents in the state of Ohio where we were giving new legal guidance, interpretation of the legal guidance. No laws changed. Interpretation of the laws have changed. It started with a case called Bellbrook. So, in discussing this case, I think it's worthwhile noting that the actions committed and reported in this district have never occurred in Willoughby, Eastlake with regard to the levy committee and the district, at least since my arrival. However, this case has brought new legal scrutiny to all Ohio public schools and those levy committees. The scrutiny exists in Ohio districts because district administrators, such as superintendents and treasurers, are perceived to always be on the clock. So, historically, a superintendent could work on a levy committee, just not during their scheduled work hours. The, Mr. Faber interprets that differently. So, he said, this is almost a direct quote, "If a superintendent attends a basketball game on Saturday night, are they not the superintendent?" Of course, the answer is yes, you are the superintendent. So, therefore, superintendents are always on the clock. Same could be said of district treasurers. That changes the game significantly. And therefore, if they speak publicly, or obviously favorable about a school levy, it can be said that funds are being used to support the passage of a levy. You cannot use taxpayer money to support the passage of a levy. That's always been the case. It's always had to be privately gathered. But now, if the superintendent or the treasurer are acting in their capacity as superintendent or treasurer, then they're being paid by tax dollars. Therefore, you're in violation of the law. In the case of Bellbrook Schools, however, there were some violations of election laws that are not arguable. These consisted of at least two occasions when the district money was used to create literature or mail literature, which was a misuse of public funds. We know that. We've not done that ever here. So, that's not an issue that we're currently dealing with. I believe there are a few important takeaways from this example as you work to form a new committee or expand our committee. All activities and expenses used to influence the outcome of a vote, whether pro or con, must be conducted and paid for by members of the levy committee. Significant, to put it in perspective, easily to run a decent campaign that people know about, and people in the community, and to combat the things that Tony talked about, which we know are real, it takes money. Typically about $20,000. That's not easy for someone in the community to get appointed in January, somehow generate $20,000 in revenue or income or assets and be able to turn that in. Mailers aren't free. Banners across the social media aren't free, et cetera, et cetera. Radio spots, all of it, all of it costs money. About $20,000. As a board member, you must not approve the payment of items associated with influencing the outcome of a vote with the district funds. As a school superintendent, treasurer, et cetera, funds can be used to influence the outcome of a vote, pro or con. As a school employee, you can't be paid to work to influence the outcome of a vote, pro or con. So, for example, historically, we would send out literature of our, in our school newsletter that would say, we never said vote yes, but we would say remember to vote. Well, again, Mr. Faber interprets that as, well, why would you say remember to vote? Because you're trying to do what? And this is the key. Influence the passage of a school levy. Can't do that under current interpretation. So, I know the community's frustrated, like, why haven't you communicated? Our hands are tied at every turn about how we can communicate. Our levy committee worked hard. But, but they're so small and underfunded, making it extremely challenging. This is why a superintendent or treasurer is currently being told by legal counsel, our legal counsel in writing and verbally, to avoid working on a levy, and board members, sorry, to avoid working on a levy, it is assumed that you would want the levy to pass to pay your salaries. Therefore, regardless of participating in a meeting, only to inform, your presence can be viewed as being in favor of supporting the levy and thus a violation. So, if I, I can't even go out in the community and explain why, what this money's being used for. Something as direct and straightforward as that would be construed, could be construed as trying to influence the passage of a levy. According to ORC, Ohio Revised Code 3315.07, "School boards may spend public funds to communicate information about the plans, policies, and operations of a political subdivision, including the ability to inform the public of consequences that are expected to follow from the passage or defeat of a particular levy." So, there is revised code that says, and I think you're going to address that to some degree, there is revised code that says, you can say, this will happen if a levy fails. But historically, especially when you haven't even failed yet, what's the community reaction to that strategy? It's hyper-negative. You're threatening us. You're... So, it's typically not done, and we didn't lose money yet. That's the important message here. We haven't lost any funds. The board's got to decide what to do moving forward, but certainly that, well, I shouldn't say certainly. I assume that's going to be back on the ballot. Whether a loan or a coupled, I don't know, but that has to go back on the ballot. If it passes in November, we do not lose funds. So, the ship is not sinking at this point. I got to watch what I say here, because I could be construed as influencing the passage of a levy. "Board members and employees of the board may, on their own, distribute privately financed materials supporting or opposing the passage of a levy." That's what the law has typically said, but our guidance now runs contrary to that. So, I believe our, you know, my recommendation, and I know Nick's recommendation to the board, is that we sit down with legal counsel again, really press the, not press the parameters, but make sure we have a full understanding of what can and cannot be done. Because we can't, as Mr. Syracusea, so, you did a good job, by the way. You didn't sound, you didn't sound like you were nervous. But those are all issues that we know exist that have to be addressed if we're going to effectively pass the school levy, so.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. There's a lot there to unpack. And as a new board, we've had our own ability to reach out and speak directly with legal counsel. I have already sought a second opinion from separate legal counsel, to which the board received an email today with some more information. We are actively trying to do everything we can. In fact, I held a one-on-one meeting in which, with our legal counsel and our administrators, I drilled, trying to find different ways to ensure that we could communicate. But these suggestions put us between a rock and a hard place. And that is notify the community the way that we always did. Put it in our newsletters. Put it on the website. Do the update with the soup. Have the treasurer talks. Get out in the community and have the conversations. And potentially set the district up for the wrath of the state to come and potentially spend our hard-earned tax dollars. Instead of going to our students, it would go to defending lawsuit. And I can only speak to myself, but as a board member, there's nothing I take more seriously than any expense that I approve. And I want every dollar to go to our students, our teachers, and to our district. So, the decision was made to comply with the guidance and not communicate. Whether that was right or wrong, I don't have an answer for you right now. It is. That's where we're at. So, at this point in time, communication is something that we are going to, very much so focus on, and we are going to find a way through. And I see this as an opportunity. I strongly believe, and I know this board does as well, that information is power and education is important. And the role of the board is to ensure that the community fully understands what we're working with so it can be a collaborative participatory event in everything that we do. So, I'm really looking forward to working with our community and working with this board. And I know we're all committed to really overcome this levy failure and to help our community understand where we stand in the event that it does fail again. Now, before I transition to my proposal that myself and Mrs. Menzer have worked on, I wanted to give everybody an opportunity, if you so choose, to add anything that has been said.
Yeah, I got some. Alright, so, I too am very frustrated with this frontal assault on public schools. I am absolutely convinced it is a full-out war. I don't know why Mr. Faber has changed his perception or why he's interpreting it different, because what, from what I understand, the Sugar Creek-Bellbrook thing was pretty egregious, and that's not Willoughby-Sixth Street Schools. We do not operate that way. I will tell you, Steve is not making this up. Absolutely not making this up. This is not Steve Thompson, not Nick Ternello, trying to obfuscate their roles in this administration. Absolutely not. We've had a lot of one-on-one conversations to this effect. So, it is absolutely not Steve and not Nick saying, we're just going to let the thing roll and see how it goes. This legal counsel is risk averse, in my opinion, too risk averse. We need to push this envelope to the point where the balloon breaks. But we're not the subject matter experts, just the dad on a board, right? These guys are the experts, right? And the union reps are experts to how they see this through. So, anyway, so I want to make that clear. It was more of a comment than a statement. Do we know why Mr. Faber changed the perspective? This, is there any speculation, or am I just, is that an obvious answer that I shouldn't ask? Alright, I'll skip that. Can you answer this? Is it fair to say we are more risk averse now as a result of this? Because this Bellbrook case is, is it a criminal offense that the superintendent? What's different? Are we talking about misdemeanors, felonies? What is driving everyone nuts about this? Do we know that?
This is a 180-degree turn from how we've interpreted, and our legal counsel hasn't interpreted, the statutes. We've always known you can't, being very conscientious about not using school money, being very conscientious about not doing the work during the school day, not using school computers, not using our printers, et cetera, et cetera. Making sure we account for every dollar when we, through our treasurer. So, we've been very accustomed to that. The threat is, the threat is not if you violate or over, you influence or violate the law. Unlike, unlike funding, funding would be a criminal. You could be criminally charged if you use funds. Inappropriately influencing probably would not lead to a criminal charge, but it could, the threat is that they could take your license as a superintendent or treasurer and therefore, basically fire you.
And I just have one more. I'm sorry.
Of course, no.
See, we don't get a chance to talk, so now we're talking.
Absolutely.
I just would also, I'd say, Mr. Syracusea, thank you for those notes, those observations from the community. As I got dad sitting on a board, I had those same, same questions. But the reasons of which we are embroiled in this controversy doesn't allow us to speak openly as a board, you know? In fact, some of us can't even be, like, I can't be the levy committee chairperson of the board. We had to have a third party engage in that. So, you're asking great questions. I know we're not supposed to answer them, but I've got them here too. And we're going to get some answers, so. Thank you, Madam President.
No, and that's it. This time is for us. This is the board discussion, so. Anyone else? Okay. So, just before I move on to the proposal, the idea that we have, Mr. Ternello, can you speak as to just real high level? The levy funds associated with the levy on May 3rd, what do those support for our district? Where do those funds get allocated?
It was about $4.745 million, so about 5% of our budget. And those were for the day-to-day operations, which includes salaries for all of our staff members, which is about 80% of our budget. So, the people, the impact, the people that are making impressions and the impact on their kids, those are the, that's what's being funded. You know, same with utilities, keeping lights on. This is just the day-to-day operations of the district.
When was it first passed?
First passed in 1994.
So, it's been renewed previously?
For about 28 years.
At the same level of funding.
Correct.
So, $4.7 million back in 1994, we collected and up until May 3rd, well, we're still collecting it, is the same 4.7. So, it's not been indexed over time. And that's that House Bill 920? Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ternello. So, this is new for our board. We've come up with an idea to propose, and I'm actually going to do a quick presentation, and I have a copy of it for the board, and obviously, so everybody else can see, it'll be up. I didn't, Mrs. Menzer and I didn't want this to be just a discussion. We wanted you to be able to see it, to be able to digest it, and to take it and reflect on it, just as the board does as well.
Do you have three minutes?
I am not a member of the public. This is not the right one.
Scroll down to Vettori again. Second from the bottom.
Nothing like a presentation with a glitch. Okay. So, what I'm proposing as just a board member, and I think this is also something to clarify. I am the president of the board. However, I have no special powers outside of being the presiding officer in meetings and being the point of contact for communication. My vote is just the same amount of weight as everybody else's, and I'm just a contributor, okay? So, I think that's important to know. So, the proposal is that we feel, I would like to ask the board to consider a strategic planning committee. And this is just a proposal that I want to develop.
And this is just a proposal that I want to develop this evening, and I want it to be a discussion. I'd like to get through the proposal, and then when we make the motion for the resolution, we can kind of tear it apart, rebuild it. This is the beginning foundation of the idea. The objectives of this strategic planning committee would be to create a board-led, community-based committee. And the word there is "community-based," it would be comprised of community members. It would be to empower the community to investigate and create recommendations that would be considered in the event of another failure in November. So this committee's job is to help understand the impact to the district with these funds. If they're not voted on to be in favor of the levy in November, then we would have to look at our budget and look at our district and find ways to continue operating without those funds. The committee would help identify what those decisions could potentially be. The proposed composition of the committee would be as follows. We would have 30 community members, 15 would be chosen via a lottery. Now you might be thinking, that's only 50%. These individuals, all 30 would submit an application for the committee, and we post it on the district's website. So I would work with Dr. Thompson and our IT department to create an electronic way to submit your name to be put into the lottery, to be potentially chosen to be a part of the committee. And then there'd be 15 individuals that would be invited by the board. Now you might be thinking, why would we do 15 chosen and 15 invited? Ultimately, it's to balance the demographics of those that are selected in the lottery. So let's say we select 15 people and 12 of them have student athletes. Well, that committee is going to have one perspective and not all perspectives. So what we would do is, let's say we have 100 people who submit an application, we randomly select 15, and from the remaining, we would ensure that we have a balanced committee that is comprised of individuals who are homeowners in the district, parents with students enrolled, retirees, renters, alumni, representation for affiliated groups. You know, we've got our academic, music, athletic. So we want to really ensure that we can have all voices on that committee so that all options could be considered. Now, these, this committee is a board committee, therefore it'd be subject to the Open Meetings Act. And what that means is we'd have to do notification to the public, just like we do today, for all of our meetings as a board. We would have to have an agenda set, and that agenda would let the community know what's to be covered in the meetings of this committee, and it would require meeting minutes to be taken. Now, at the same time, it, the community could attend these meetings, but only the committee members can participate, just like our meetings today. We have the opportunity for community to come, but we are the only ones that would be able to speak or discuss or to take, take action. Okay? I would like to recommend that these meetings be livestreamed and posted on our district website so that the community could view them as well. So when this committee meets, they would operate the same way that we do as a board. Now that means we would have to have board representation to ensure that these requirements are followed and would also give some direction in the creation of the agenda. It would put the work on the two board members that are on the committee to orchestrate and to operate the committee as it is. Now, I put together a timeline. This is something that is just a proposal, it's an idea, and would require it to be decided upon by the committee. Essentially, between 5:10 and 5:17, I would recommend to open up community application through our website. And the information that would go on there is something, obviously, we would have to discuss this evening so that we could create that and get it live tomorrow. And then we would hold our lottery in a special meeting of the board on 5, between 5:18 and 5:20. So that would be an agenda item is to legitimately, from those that have applied, in live, open session, to poll names and then discuss the composition through the 15 lotteryed, and then leverage the other applicants to find a balanced board from the remaining applicants. If we do not have enough applicants to do up to 30, that is something that we need to discuss, maybe we could poll in community members that we know are engaged. I'm not saying names. But I also want to point out, these could be individuals who were against the levy or for the levy. It's any and all community members that want to submit an application to participate. And then the last week of May would be the organizational meeting. And just as a highlight, I think these meetings would need to be two hours in length. The first hour would be for organization, kind of orientation, what's the committee? How are we operating? Making decisions about how it functions, ensuring that all participants are on, are informed and prepared. And then we would ask a subject matter expert, Mr. Ternello in this case, to provide factual support and information to the committee based on their request. And then in June, we would have an administrators' meeting or daily operations where we would invite in Dr. Thompson, maybe administrators from elementary, middle, and high school to provide us their insights on some different things, answering questions and the like. And then we would conduct another meeting in July, inviting in parent, student, booster organizations, these are all just ideas, by the way, to ensure that the committee is really considering all perspectives in the process. And then in August, there would be kind of a recommendations approach meeting. Now that we've done our discovery, and we've asked our questions, and we have the information we want, let's decide as a committee, how are we going to approach making a recommendation for impact or reduction of services? And then in August, there would be a collaboration meeting with district administrators. You know, we can't say, oh, we're getting rid of our lunch program forever, that's how we're going to do that. We need to ensure that we are following all the rules, regulations associated with school, public school operation, so the committee would have an opportunity to meet with Dr. Thompson, Mr. Ternell, or whomever needed to be invited to ensure that the recommendation pathway is a legitimate pathway that could be taken. And then in, these are all in succession, if you notice, then they would need to make decisions for recommendations in August so that the board could consider them in a reporting out in September, which would give the district enough time to fully consider the recommendations of the community, have open and transparent communication and conversation in advance to say, well, what will, could, should happen? And we would know all that by September. So this is once again a tentative timeline, it's just an idea, it's a proposal at this point for consideration of the board. And with that, I want you just to think about your questions and also some feedback because this is just an idea that I hope the rest of us as a board can discuss.
Okay. So I think, and I'll ask, Mr. Ternello, do you feel that discussion should occur now? Should we wait until we make the motion to discuss the resolution?
Typically, you do the motion second and discussion.
Okay, so we're gonna have to just let it marinate for a minute, and then we'll transition. Thank you, sir. Okay. So with that, I don't want this to be the only thing. Is there anything else for board discussion that we need a chance to talk about?
On the topic of levies?
Well, it could be, yep. Anything. Not the proposal, I'll have to wait till a recommendation, I'm sorry. Okay. So we'll move on then. Thank you, Mr. Vettori. So we'll move on to item 5A, the approval of minutes of April 1st of 2022. These are, yeah. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2022?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 5A, approval of minutes of April 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler. Discussion? Mr. Ternello?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Move on to item 5B, the approval of minutes for April 11th, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of April 11th, 2022?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of item 5B, April 11th.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Menzer. Discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Ternello?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Move on to item 5C, approval of minutes of April 23rd, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of April 23rd, 2022?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 5C, minutes of April 23rd, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler. Any discussion? Mr. Ternello?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Okay, we'll now move on to item 6A, board recommendations for the strategic planning committee. Do I hear a motion to approve item 6A, strategic planning committee?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve strategic planning committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Menzer. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. The floor is now open for discussion with regards to the proposal.
The only question I had is, do you think the timeframe for accepting applications is a little bit short? Will we get enough applications in that time?
I think it's a good observation. I just still, what I was kind of aiming for was how can we get meetings in and have a recommendation issued by September? So I, I think, once again, getting it out to the community so they have time to apply is critical, so yes. Okay, so timeline.
When we say "community," this is community staff, but board-led, but this is not a levy committee.
That is a great question. So the levy committee is a separate organization that focuses on the promotion or promotion of whatever their sentiments are surrounding a levy. This is a committee because we have a levy failure, so instead of us just telling the community, we're gonna cut A, B, and C, that we decided as a board or with our administrators to cut, we want to bring the community in and include them in the process and give them an opportunity to, to ask the necessary questions and to see if maybe they can identify, in the event of a failure in November, other ways, or the ways to best move forward without those funds.
That's a lot of energy and a lot of effort to figure out what we're gonna cut, but shouldn't we have energy and effort to figure out how to pass it?
That's great. Oh, what'd you say? I was saying we, we can't vote.
Because of that, because of the Sugar Creek stuff.
But this would, once again, the focus of it is to say, if the community has voted saying that the funds are not necessary for a variety of reasons, then let's invite the community in to, to see that and to understand what the expenses are for things and to allow them to help us with that process.
The constant feedback we hear from the community is, we don't listen to them, we just make decisions, they don't matter, even though they're paying taxes. So this is one way to bring them in, let them be heard or have a chance to say what they think we should do.
And, and you're right, it is an extreme amount of effort, and it's going to take a lot of time. And the members who support the board committee, now what's important about it being a board-led committee is that board members would be the ones who are doing the operations, running the meetings, ensuring that Ohio Meetings Act is met. They would be conducted at the board office because it's in relation to the district, it's not in relation to the passage of a levy. The levy has failed, so this is the committee put together to figure out next steps.
And board-led by definition is the seven or just the five?
That's another great question. So it would only be two members, and we would not be having a quorum, this would not be the entire board. The committee, the two board members that sit on the committee would report back to the board each month. So I know in conversations, we understand the weight and effort of this. I was going to nominate Mrs. Menzer to be a part of the committee. And ultimately, we would seek a second nomination.
I would nominate Krista.
So. That shooting and dropping, you know? So this was something that was an idea born of, out of our April 23rd board retreat, we had discussed committees at length, and what could their purpose be? How could they, the community, be more involved in the drivers of the decisions of the board? And after that meeting, it was like a light bulb after the levy had failed, that this was a perfect opportunity to bring to life committees that are led by the board and to invite the community in to be a part of processes that it traditionally wasn't. So it would just be us.
Okay, I may not, I don't mean to be poking at this.
Poke at it.
Poking at it.
Please do.
How is this, this is gonna be confused with a levy committee, right? Only in the, in the context of, I know because you certainly can't do levy committee business with the tools and resources of the school district, which is preposterous, but here we are. But the, like, for example, can, who better than the staff, staff leadership to know what to cut and not cut?
That's another great question. So this would be 50% of what we as a board would consider in the event that cuts needed to be made. They are not the sole deciding body. In fact, the idea is to do more of discovery at the financial level, the administrative level, the building level, the contributing affiliated organization level, so that the committee can get really educated and informed, it'd be driven by their decisions. And we would be inviting those subject matter experts into those meetings to provide the right information. But one of the last things that the committee does is sit down with the administration and say, this is where we're thinking of going. And then Dr. Thompson, Mr. Ternello, or whomever needed to, based on those recommendations, to come in and say, ah, because they are the subject matter experts, they do understand it the best. Now, at the same time, Dr. Thompson, Mr. Ternello, and the administrators and teachers in the district will be doing their normal process to evaluate what they feel is the best. And then there would be a consideration of the committee as well as the administration's recommendations, or maybe they'll end up to be very similar. In the event that it fails in November, it would be a joint consideration of the board. So it's a two-sided effort. It's not in any way discrediting or discounting the feedback of the employees of the district.
That was a great question.
What else? It's a lot, I know.
I think perhaps one thing we might want to just check with legal counsel, would legal counsel view this as two board members being engaged in a process that was meant to influence the passage of a levy? In other words, this, the two board members worked on this committee, this committee's coming up with recommendations for cuts, which would of course be put out to the community just to protect you two, I'd at least ask that question, would, could that be construed as influencing passing?
Completely agree with Dr. Thompson, because I just, because of all of that, it's been written so far, I.
Was it, Dr. Thompson, wasn't that part of one of the Ohio advice codes you read that we could say this is what would be cut?
I would, I'm, I'm not saying poo-poo it, I'm just saying, just to make sure, I just thought of it now, should, just make sure that that is, whichever legal counsel we're gonna end up being advised by, that they would say that that is, that is not a, I just don't want.
You don't want Mr. Faber to get all up in arms.
Yeah, I just don't, yeah.
Dr. Thompson, when the levy failed, that we lost the Soy High School?
Right.
Did you not hold community meetings at that point in time to determine what the cuts were gonna be?
We sure did. I mean, we did a lot of things then that were being advised that we can't do now. Yes, we, we did, we did surveys, if you recall, surveys of about, I think it was about 600 people. And they prioritized what they thought was most important to the least important. So, and that was, and that played a significant role in what we decided to do. So engaging of the community, I totally understand the, the thought process, and I, again, I'm not saying not to do it at all, don't misunderstand me, I'm just simply thinking, just to protect yourselves. the, the, um, thought process. And I, again, I'm not saying not to do it at all. Don't misunderstand me, I'm just simply thinking, just to protect yourselves, you can go ahead and approve the resolution, but I'd still just check with legal counsel and make sure that they're not, um, going to advise against it, or at least have that information as you make a decision moving forward.
I suspect through, through it, it would be more of advise us on what should or should not be discussed.
Might be.
And I'm just taking notes. So, if the committee were to be voted on to stand it up, and once again, we would still need to hold an organizational meeting, and then that organizational meeting and orientation would need to be provided to those members that are participating. And I feel, um, the recommendation of advisement of council to ensure that that, the organizational purpose is clearly defined and that scope is aligned to, could easily be done. And, um, I, you know, I could absolutely, uh, ensure that we report out on that, um, as soon as we receive that information. So, okay. So, we're looking at, um, ensuring that we really, this is an information-driven committee that would really help provide recommendation in conjunction with the administration and the educators in the district. And also, um, would really stay true to its purpose. Any thoughts about the lotterying or the, the decision-making? Of how we would invite the community in? Obviously, we would, um, ask Dr. Thompson and our IT team to try to blast this as much as we can. Because we're asking for members to be a part of a committee. And ultimately, committees are, are held by boards all the time. Boards often have board-driven committees. And we would put it on our website, on our Facebook page, and, uh, reach out to our local municipalities to see if there's any other ways that we can, legitimately advertise to get individuals. So, this way, if you're not listening on school board meetings, you don't have a student in the district, but maybe you're engaged in other ways, we could try to, um, ensure that they're aware and informed. Questions about that, or? Okay. And then, you know, after speaking with Dr. Thompson and Mr. Charnello, who were, um, they were sought out with this idea and a full discussion was had with both of them, uh, to get their sentiments and their feedback in advance of proposal. One of the things that was, um, taken away from that was, you really need to make decisions by September. And, um, maybe the dates that are there aren't appropriate. That was something that could be discussed as well, um, but a September timeline for recommendations. I know as a board member, I'd be looking from that, from the administration. If we didn't have a committee, I'd be like, hey, tell me what's going to happen. I want to know in October, so that if it doesn't pass, we know what our next steps are in November. And we would want to inform the community of those next steps, which we can notify the community of that, as long as it's in a very clear, factual way.
Clearly, the levy committee's going to need that information bec-, because this is a do or die levy in November. So, people are, people will certainly have the expectation that they will know what the consequences of a failed levy entail. So, yeah, at least by September, I would agree that that literature would be made around it, strategies, et cetera, et cetera.
And that would be the discretion of the levy committee.
Right, exactly.
But for us, just for quality communication with our community, we would want to let them know this is where we're at. And we know that we can do that.
Correct.
Yes. Other questions or ideas?
What if you can't get fifteen?
It's a great question. Let's explore that. So, if we can't get thirty individuals, then the committee could be comprised of those that applied. And then we could seek to invite, because we can as a board invite individuals to participate. So, we could seek out, maybe speak to the PTAs or the boosters or even other municipalities and say, do you have individuals that are in these demographics? Um, we need some individuals who are retirees. We need some individuals that are non-homeowners.
Can you be on the Strategic Planning Committee and on the Levy Committee as a layperson?
I would assume, um, that they can gainfully engage in any committee that is not, I mean, that's a separate, totally separate entity and organization. So, and that, once again, I, that's, that's a great question. I don't think I necessarily have the answer to, but I assume they could. What else? I know it's kind of new and different, but I think it's time for change. I think it's time for a different approach. I think it's time to try something new, and at least we try. And, um, I know as a parent, for better or for worse, I, I'm a fairly direct and honest person. I always felt that I was being threatened as a parent when a levy failed. I distinctly remember that. And that was never, I, I know now that wasn't the intent, but that's how it felt. And I didn't feel like I had a voice to kind of contribute to that narrative. And that's where it's born of. Committees help include the community. And this just happens to s- be an opportunity in which it makes the most sense to involve the community, because the community votes on it. The community, um, should have a say. So. I think that's all I had to say. Did anyone else have anything to add? Okay, well, then, hearing no more discussion, Mr. Charnello, can you please take a roll?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Do you have to go in order?
Yes, he calls me every time.
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Thank you. We will be reporting out on that, and the work begins the minute the meeting ends this evening. Okay. I want to thank the, um, the board for your support, and I promise that you will be fully informed on everything, as well as the community. Okay, moving on from six A, we're going to go to item seven, Treasurers Report. Mr. Charnello?
Thank you. Uh, seven A is the financial report for the month ended April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. I wanted to point out that the estimates have been realigned to match that of the five-year forecast. Watch out, Darth Vader's here. Is that through public count? Oh, no, it is. So, the estimates have been, been realigned to the five-year forecast, which is in item B. So, as always, the monthly board report should be your, like, your guidelines to the five-year forecast. So, that is your guideline for the current fiscal year. Five-year forecast is a lookout for the next four years, plus this current year. We have moved additional funds over to Red Tree Investments to take advantage of the rising interest rates. That is one plus of rising interest rates, is you make more money on your investments. However, don't refinance your home. Rates at Farmers and Star Ohio around point four zero percent, so forty basis points. That's, it's pretty great, pretty great. Uh, Red Tree is currently at one point two four percent, so about three times more. The reason we didn't move at all to Red Tree is due to liquidity and the ability to pay bills and make payroll. So, Star Ohio and Farmers, they're more liquid. We can move those money market accounts over to US Bank, make payroll, and do our weekly check runs versus Red Tree. You're investing in short-term investments such as commercial paper, which have might, might have a nine-month maturity. So, those are, um, shorter, can get you a higher interest rate, however, they're not as liquid, which, so you're sacrificing liquidity for higher interest rates. So, I do do cash flow analysis to make sure that, you know, we can still pay our bills, while at the same time locking in funds while we don't necessarily need them to make payroll or pay the bills.
Making payroll probably important.
Just a little bit, just a little bit. Don't want to make the headlines for that one. Uh, seven B is the five-year forecast. I did want to highlight the difference between the November and May ending cash balances. November was about thirty million dollars in November, and this is, uh, fiscal twenty-six, so bottom right corner. Thirty million dollars in May, it's about sixteen million, so difference of about fourteen million dollars, which is pretty substantial. So, I want to highlight the timeline on House Bill one-ten. The rollout was in January of two thousand and twenty-two, and for a few months, I've been mentioning that it's been coming in lower than expected. As this is new from the Ohio Department of Education, reports were slowly rolled out, which made data verification very difficult. In March, I was able to dig into some additional data, and I worked with the Ohio Department of Education to see why we are not being funded at the amounts we were estimated when House Bill one-ten was rolled out. We determined that it was a data error that impacted some of the schools around the state. I want to reiterate that this is not money that we had and lost. This is money that we thought we were going to receive, and we just never, we're not going to receive it now. So, it's not lost money, it's just we're not going to get it. So, thankfully, we were able to determine this data error very quickly before we began to make decisions with money that we are never going to receive. For reference, if you run, the, the cost to run Willabees Lake Schools is about eight million dollars per month. And the recommendation by the Government Finance Officers Association is to keep sixty days in, eh, sixty days in cash reserves, which is your, your savings account. So, for us, that's sixteen million dollars. Thankfully, we were able to maintain that level of cash reserves throughout the five-year forecast, assuming that all renewal levies are passed. So, I just want to point that out. So, as long as all renewal levies are passed, we will have, still have a healthy five-year forecast. However, it's not as great as we thought in November. Um, we're still doing okay, as long as we can pass these renewal levies. And that five-year forecast is up for your vote.
Okay, so, do I hear a motion to approve item seven B, the five-year forecast?
Madam President, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve item seven B, five-year forecast.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you very much. Discussion?
I do have a quick question. So, the data error and everything that's there, we have things in place right now that'll help identify that data error that'll help us really track it to ensure that that is not an issue in the future, correct?
Yep, uh, like I said, it happened through ODE, so they're all aware, we're aware, and we all know we're, what we're looking for. This new formula is a little different than the old formula, and it's a little bit more touchy. Um, but yeah, so, there's checks and balances in place.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Charnello?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Five C or seven C is the amended appropriations. Um, just like in seven A, the general fund was adjusted to match the five-year forecast amounts. And also, we did receive or we were approved for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in Fund four-nine-nine for the purchase of three new school buses, which is an agenda item D.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve item?
Not that one.
Not that one? Wait, which one?
That was, uh, there was no approval on that one.
Oh. I apologize. I'm trying to make more work for us.
Seven D, the bus purchase resolution. Uh, we will use these funds that we were awarded to offset three of the buses, um, and save the district two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, versus leasing them through our, uh, third-party Peterman. So, um, this is the resolution to authorize and go forward with the buses that we went and got, and I think February that we authorized.
Do I hear a motion to approve item seven D, the bus purchase resolution?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item seven D, bus purchase resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler. So, uh, floor is open for discussion.
Buying the buses from Peterman or somewhere else? I'm sorry.
Um, we're going through the Ohio School Council. There, um, it's a consortium, so it pulls all the schools together. And they, so, six hundred schools is a lot more buying power than one school. So, they'll go out and try to buy a thousand buses, and then they'll get the best price, and we can buy three of those buses at cost from the high school council.
And then Peterman manages them?
Um, but they'll, they'll, our mechanics will still maintain them, and they'll, they'll go through our day-to-day fleet. So, instead of just leasing them through Peterman, we'll own these three.
Gotcha.
I know that we had previously voted on this, but it might be a good opportunity. How did it, how did you save two hundred and thirty-five thousand when you made that statement?
So, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is awarded through that state grant that we just got, and the other one hundred thousand was, we don't have to pay those interest payments over the fifteen-year life of that bus. So, we would just pay the upfront fee, and so between the state funding and what we pay, it'll end up saving us another hundred thousand dollars in interest.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Charnello?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Passes five zero. Five E is the healthcare contract. This is the recommended change in medical providers for Medical Mutual to United Healthcare. Uh, the change in carriers will save the health insurance plan four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in fixed costs and reduce the maximum claims liability by about one point seven million dollars. In addition, we are receiving a risks, risk share over one hundred and five percent over the expected. Um, well, typically, we don't see any risk share until over twenty percent. This will hopefully allow the plan to stabilize. To date, the plan has already spent five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars more than it has brought in. So, we've been adjusting with the Health Insurance Committee and our consultants to try to adjust the, um, and make changes. However, nothing is really worked to date. And we feel like this, um, can stabilize it without being a cost to the district and the employees, and maintaining the great benefits that we have. So, like I said, we have, we're, we've worked with our health insurance consultants and the committee, and we're working to ensure a smooth transition. So, videos and question and answers will be produced and communicated to staff in the coming weeks. Um, and the open enrollment period for staff would be June eighth to decide what they would like to do with their health insurance. And the change in carriers would go into effect July first.
It's important to note that there is absolutely zero change to the design of the plan. The, the percentage of in-network, they ran the in-network, uh, they ran all the doctors and procedures that were in-network under Medical Mutual, and had those exact same things occurred under United Healthcare. It was slightly higher, both of them were extremely high, like in the high nineties of being in-network versus out-of-network. So, um, and I think it's also important to note, we work closely with our, with our union leaders and representatives from the unions. And once again, um, I can't give them enough credit for working through this. I know they have an incredibly difficult job to go back and talk to their members. Uh, N- Nancy really wanted to do that, so she volunteered to be the person that talks to all union members across all unions. So, we're thankful for that. But, um, they were really instrumental in making this, making this work. And I, I hope you heard that one point seven million dollars in liability that we are no longer on the hook for. So, that's, um, a pretty incredible opportunity at zero increased cost to employees and zero change to their coverage design or in-network care.
Do I hear-
What's that?
Do I hear a motion to pru-, to approve item seven E, healthcare contract?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item seven E, healthcare contract.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Menzer. The floor is open for discussion. I, at our retreat on the twenty-third, we spent a significant amount of time diving into this and understanding the inner workings of our insurance policy for our employees of the district. And we're self-insured, correct?
Correct.
Now, I know that this is gonna, you're gonna be like, oh, Krista, Mrs. Baer. What does it mean to be self-insured as a district?
So, all of the employee and school district contributions are premiums from paychecks, uh, go into a bucket of money. And then from that bucket of money, you would pay all of your claims, fees, your administrative costs to the network provider, the pharmacy benefit manager. And you can find this in the monthly financial reports, Fund zero-two-four, in case you want to see how it's doing. Don't look right now. But, um, but that's, so- But that's, so instead of just like your car insurance, you pay a premium and you never get in an accident and it just goes away. So we're, if we don't go to the doctor one year and we have a really good claims year, the plan benefits. And it helps offset bad plan years. However, we've had a couple years of bad plan years, so we're trying to make adjustments. And thankfully, this renewal cycle allowed us some savings and reduced liability without adjusting plan design or employee contributions or employee or school district contributions. So like I said, it'll hopefully keep us afloat and we'll keep making adjustments and we'll see what United Healthcare can do for us.
So ultimately, it's reducing the total overall expense out of the district funds to help support the pot that the money's in.
The school doesn't have to put more in to the pot, correct? Because we're spending less, we don't have, no one has to increase more to go into the bucket. So hopefully, the bucket can just sustain itself.
I did have another question. So one of the things that we also discussed on the twenty-third, and I just wanted to revisit, was United Healthcare would be the new provider. And what we found through the study, and please correct me if I'm inaccurately remembering, is that the, what is in the existing plan as considered out-of-network, which will cost our employees more money because it's an out-of-network expense. With United Healthcare, a majority of those out-of-network expenses are now in-network, which means as an employee, I would pay the in-network associated cost versus an out-of-network. So it's actually kind of hopefully saving in some instances our employees.
As Dr. Thompson alluded, I think Medical Mutual is about ninety-eight percent in-network.
Yep.
Or maybe a little over ninety-eight percent, and I think United Healthcare is ninety-nine point seven percent. So there's actually about one and a half percent increase of in-network coverage between Medical Mutual and United Healthcare.
Okay.
And we did a, we're gonna present the doctors that would be still classified as out-of-network to our employees.
Okay.
But like one doctor was all the way in Delaware. So we don't know if they were on vacation and went to Delaware or what. So we just have providers list, we don't know who actually went.
Okay, thank you.
All that will be communicated to staff.
And is there any change in premiums to the staff?
Nope, nope, change in premiums, no change in plan. All their deductibles will be applied to date over to the new carrier. So it's, the only thing that's gonna feel different is your medical card. Instead of saying Medical Mutual, say United Healthcare. Everything else should stay the same. Like I said, we were gonna work with our consultants and the unions to make some videos, FAQs, and try to ease some stress and hopefully make it a smooth transition.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Tarnello?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Seven F, purchase orders and blanket certificates. I was gonna have Kathy do this one. First one's for Air Force One. This was, we thought, gonna be a routine furnace.
Air Force One is not the plane, by the way.
Or the shoes.
It's a furnace repair company, boiler repair company furnace. And instead of being a small fix, they ended up needing to tear the whole thing apart because it was that bad. So instead of being a five thousand dollar bill, it was an eighteen thousand dollar bill, which is why that increase is on the board agenda. These other ones for athletics, a lot of them are through for tuition. A lot of them were just due to timing between they'd, someone would back-bill or back-date their invoices. The purchase order was later, so whenever you have that, when the invoice comes before the purchase order, you have to do a then-and-now certificate. I'm only authorized by law to do those three thousand dollars and under. So anything over three thousand goes to you. The last is a blanket certificate for payment in lieu of transportation, Pilo, rental transportation, whatever you want to call it. This, these are for students that are going to private schools and are identified by transportation as impractical to bus, maybe due to distance or how many students go there. And instead of providing in lieu of transportation, we offer them an dollar amount. So typically, in prior years, it was two hundred and fifty dollars. Because of House Bill 110, it increased to five hundred and thirty-eight dollars fifty-five cents. So there was an increase. And the increase is based off of the T2 report, and it's half of the cost for a regular ed student. So they believe the cost for regular ed students is about a thousand forty bucks or a thousand eighty bucks. So that's where the five hundred and thirty-eight dollars fifty-five cents comes from. So that's what those payment-in-lie of transportation payments are. But like I said, that's because of the increase from House Bill 110, that's why that's on the agenda. Seven G, transfer funds to new fiscal year. This is a fund from fiscal twenty-one. We just missed rolling it over to fiscal twenty-two. It's for student wellness and success funds. Those funds are no longer in Fund 467. With House Bill 110, they're just earmarked in the new House Bill 110 formula. And you'll see it on the monthly financials as restricted fund. You'll still think it's about five hundred thousand dollars per year. But those are earmarked for like mental health services and things of that nature. There's specific guidelines that you have to spend these restricted funds on. So instead of getting its own fund, it's just now restricted within the general fund. Seven H, student activity accounts. This is a revision for a budget-only for the South High School National Honor Society. And seven I, gifts and donations. The Royal View PTA donated eight hundred and twenty-six dollars fifty cents to Royal View for twenty stools for their Maker Space Room. And the Babcock Vocational Education Trust donated six thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-two cents to NCI Willoughby Auto Tech Program for a sandblaster in tools. So appreciate those donors, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tarnello. We'll now move on to item eight, superintendent resolutions.
Thank you, Madam President. Item A for your consideration is a resolution to terminate alignment agreement with the ESC of Northeast Ohio. So to give you just a little bit of history, ESCs are educational service centers. You're required by statute to belong to an ESC. It has historically been every county had their own ESC and that's who you belong to. Then the law changed and said you could go to any county that you wanted to go to. And then they started taking funds away from ESCs and EST started consolidating. So the ESC of Northeast Ohio is essentially Kioga County, which encompasses a lot of school districts beyond just Kioga County. So Lake County ESC, which we used to belong to before Kioga County, is now the ESC of the Western Reserve, which is a combination of Geoga and Lake County ESCs coming into one. So why are we in Kioga County over the last several years and not our own county? So that's what I'll cover. So our geographic location, there are two service centers that assist school districts with things such as administrative professional development about legislative changes and professional development for staff members regarding updates to curriculums, for example. ESCs also assist with flow-through money that comes from the state, that's the critical piece. So it's roughly about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so not insignificant money by any stretch. And when we left the ESC of Lake County, the ESC of Lake County was barely holding on financially and they were not flowing that money through from Lake County to the school district. Kioga County would. So we transferred to Kioga County. The Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio is Kioga County. The Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve, again, is Lake and Geoga. Typically, school districts work with the ESC in their own county. At one point in time, we did. But again, the financial move to Kioga County made sense. At this time, funding received from both ESCs is equal and therefore, it makes sense to transition back to our home county. That is where we have agreements for personnel, et cetera, et cetera, run through the Western Reserve, i.e. Lake and Geoga County and not Kioga County. Now, I will say this, that both of these agencies do great work. There's been absolutely nothing that the ESC of Northeast Ohio did wrong. It's just simply returning back to our home county.
Do I hear a motion to approve item eight A, resolution to terminate alignment agreement with the ESC of Northeast Ohio?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve item eight A, resolution terminate alignment agreement with the ESC of Northeast Ohio.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus. The floor is open for discussion. So Dr. Thompson, you and I had spoken earlier, I had some questions with regard to this. And ultimately, there wouldn't be any impact to the services the district currently provides with this being terminated. It's just merely an agreement that we're no longer, we're dissolving and no longer in need of.
Yeah, you, no one would even know the difference.
Just wanted to make sure. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none. Oh, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, no.
I was just gonna ask one question. I notice in the agreement, it says that we're terminating the agreement effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Right.
And then two paragraphs down, it says twenty twenty-two. Why is that?
There has to be a notice and then a movement out, but I'll double-check and make sure that the, that we have the right date.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, thank you. You have to give notice, you can't just move like one month to the next.
Is there anything that needs to be signed this evening to support that? Or is it just the resolution?
Not at this point. There will be some documents coming, but they're not, not yet.
I think you might have to sign something after the board meeting.
One document that's withdrawing?
No, I have to send it to Northeast Ohio.
Oh, yeah, their notice, yes.
So we'll need to verify those dates. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Tarnello?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Item B for your consideration is a service agreement with Lake Geoga Computer Association. This contract is between the district and the Lake Geoga Computer Association. Through this direct, through this, the district receives support for libraries in our schools with things such as book inventories, electronic systems for students to check books in and out of the school library. Additionally, there is a program probably, if you have an athlete you're familiar with, Final Forms, where you can go in and fill out athletic forms. And these are provided through this association and to upload the information and collaborate with their coaches and the athletic directors in their schools. That's what Final Forms allows parents to do, just expedites the process.
Do I hear a motion to approve item eight B, service agreement with the Lake Geoga Computer Association?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item eight B, service agreement with the Lake Geoga Computer Association.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay, Mr. Tarnello?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Well, thank you. Madam President, item C for your consideration is fast-track auction sales agreement. And I, like you, had never heard of the fast-track auction sales company. I give all the credit to Steve Johnson. We have mobile classrooms or modular classrooms that have been outside of Edison Elementary for, since the construction of the new addition onto Edison Elementary. And they were bought used at that time. They're in pretty bad shape. We don't use them anymore and they're becoming more and more dilapidated.
You want people to buy these things.
Oh, they're great. You'd really, super, yeah. Don't look at them. But anyway, they're expensive to remove. But Steve Johnson did some research and found that there actually is a market for these that people will rehab them and resell them. So there's an opportunity, not a guarantee, but an opportunity instead of paying forty thousand to have them removed, that we can sell them for a few thousand dollars at their cost to remove. So you know, I don't know if that'll come to fruition or not, but it's certainly an opportunity for us to, you know, potentially make a buck or two, but not have to pay the removal cost. So kudos to Steve for finding, researching that and finding that.
Do I hear a motion to approve item eight C, fast-track auction sales agreement?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item eight C, fast-track auction sales agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Menzer. Discussion? I'm actually really glad when we did our building tours, when we were able to see those facilities, that they will leave because they seem to be, they're not, they need to leave.
Yeah, that's a good way to say it.
All three of my kids went through, into that building. They're not too nostalgic about it.
Yes, so I'm glad that those will be removed. I mean, the fact that they didn't have a bathroom in it, I mean, they, you know, so it's something we do not want to utilize. Any other discussion? Mr. Tarnello?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item D for your consideration is the resolution approving the sale of real property to the Lake Development Authority. And this is, again, probably most people wouldn't know, but behind where the old YMCA is. There's a small parcel of land that's landlocked between that old Y and our school properties, our soccer fields, baseball fields, if you could picture that.
Yep.
So a long, long time ago, we leased it to the YMCA and the YMCA paved it, that part of the land, to extend their parking lot, obviously. So when the Y sold, you know, that property transitioned back to us and we transitioned it back because we thought it would have value. As it turns out, it does have value, about ninety thousand dollars in value. So not significant, but ninety thousand dollars helps. And Steve, you get two out of boys in a row, are you in here, anywhere there? We agreed on ninety thousand and then it took about, what, two years to sell it?
Correct.
They came back and said eighty thousand. And Steve held his guns and said, he should've said a hundred thousand, but, but no, he's, we held, he held tight and so it sold for ninety thousand dollars. So that's what it is, it's paved land. Again, no impact on our fields, no impact on our athletics, our property, as they put the new facility there at where the Y used to be.
Do I hear a motion to approve item eight D, resolution approving the sale of real property to the Lake Development Authority?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve item eight D, resolution approving the sale of real property to Lake Development Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roskus. Floor is open for discussion. Nick, I, I have a question and Dr. Thompson, or Mr. Tarnello and Dr. Thompson. We're going to sell it and the sale would be ninety thousand. So I just have some high-level questions. Are we taxed on that amount? Is it reduced? And whatever we end up with, where does it go? So one of the questions I've seen often from the community is, you sell things, you get money for it, where does that money go and how do we utilize it as a district?
So not taxed because we're a school district, we're exempt from tax. Real property, so buildings, land, by law, it has to go to the Permanent Improvement Fund, which is our zero-zero-three fund. And that can only be spent to improve buildings or pay debt on, for buildings. So personal property like a tractor, that would go back to the general fund because that's what originally paid for it. But typically, the zero-zero-three by law is what gets real property funds.
So these funds will go in, we already lost eighteen thousand. So these funds will go in, we already lost eighteen thousand to help fix the HVAC. So when these funds go in, it's really being allocated to keep our buildings.
Mm-hmm. It could be uh, security, um, technology, buses, or buildings.
And we don't have all new buildings in the district, so I know that we also discussed on the twenty-third um, the things in different buildings that require attention. So these funds would be allocated to help support those potential upgrades, replacements, et cetera.
Yeah, any repairs, fixes, anything like that, yes.
Did you have something to share, Dr. Thompson? Just complete agreement, okay.
Agreeing.
Okay. I think it's one of the things that I wanted to also know as a board member is, we're getting money, yay. Where is it going and how it will be used? So we know that we have needs in the district to which some of that will already be spoken for.
You know, and, and a more mile-high view of that, that I think's important that you're hitting upon is, you know, um, you, so you get additional money for some variety of reasons. Seven million dollars, let's just take that number, for example. And if that moves into the general fund, the question might be from the community, what are you doing with that money? Every money, everything that we can save, any additional dollars we can accumulate, pushes off the need for the next levy. So remember, what's, what's our funding level doing? Does it ever rise? Very few, inside Millage, very few reasons it ever rises. So a- anybody running your own home, apply common sense. Could you stay stuck at the salary level, income level that you have right now in perpetuity? No. Um, eventually, your expenses will cross that axis. When we get additional funds, that allows us to push off that next ask even longer, which is what we are trying to do.
And then when you say ask, so there's different types of levies. So the levy that we had up for vote was a renewal.
No money.
No money.
New money. That's just to keep things stable.
And when you say ask, that would be
New money.
In addition to it, we need more.
That's correct.
And that is a totally separate levy, which is placed on the ballot in a totally separate way.
And right now, we show a healthy five-year forecast. If, if we can continue to pass our renewal levies, which means you're not on the ballot asking for additional new money.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Other questions? Okay, uh, hearing none. Mr. Tarnellum?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, item E for your consideration is a memorandum of understanding with the Willoughby East Lake Teachers Association. This memorandum is a, is between the district and the teachers' union, allowing us to convert a teacher's position into an administrative position, which will allow us to hire the most qualified candidate for that position. Uh, and then in return, we have historically had an art teacher in our elementary schools. Our contract requires at least a halftime art teacher. We are adding an art teacher, full-time art teacher. Um, that's not near enough, um, but it's what we used to have.
Do I hear a motion to approve item eight E, memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Willoughby East Lake Teachers Association, WEDA?
Madam President?
Mr. Boxler?
I would make a motion to approve item eight E, memorandum of understanding, MOU with Willoughby East Lake Teachers Association, WEDA.
Thank you, Mr. Boxler. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus. Um, floor is open for discussion. So the position was a gifted instructor that, we had a retired gifted, help me with the language.
Yeah, sh- she worked in the curriculum department. Um, she handled gift, gifted was a lion's share of what she did, but she also did other a few other things. And we want to expand the position to do more than just gifted. But we could not do that under the constraints of the current negotiated agreement. And under the constraints of the current negotiated agreement, we would have no control over who filled that position. It would be a position up for bid day, and whoever bids into it would get that position. And it's a pretty critical position that has, for years, Alison Soferno has been in that position. Um, and she's did a remarkable job, but unfortunately, she retired. Fortunately for her, but unfortunately for us.
Dr. Thompson, I know I reached out to you about questions on this agreement, but can you explain um, so that it can be heard? It says in the agreement, the Board of Education may eliminate the elementary art teacher position upon failure of a school levy.
Right.
Which we just had, so can you give the explanation you gave to me when we discussed?
Sure, yeah, and that's what the agreement says. The spirit of the agreement was a failed levy that resulted in the reduction of funding and moved into a RIF scenario. So since we are not in a RIF scenario and reduction of funding, we haven't moved on that position. But if the levy were to fail in November, we'd be able to move into that um, RIF reduction, and it would probably be a position that would, I would assume, would be a position that would be RIFed.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Tarnellum?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Passes, passes five zero.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Item F for your consideration is the Little Red Schoolhouse trustee. If you're not familiar, the Little Red Schoolhouse is exactly that. It is a little red schoolhouse, or a real little red schoolhouse, uh, right next to where the old board office used to be near South High School, well, Willoughby Middle, and in the same general vicinity. So when the Schoolhouse Foundation was formed in the seventies, there was a collaboration between the district, the city of Willoughby, and the foundation. Although there are no financial ties, the city of Willoughby approves the appointment of some of their trustees, and the district approves four of them. Why that is, I don't know. You'd have to go back to the seventies to know why it was ferreted out like that. The request is for the approval of a new appointment to their board. Uh, we are happy that the Little Red Schoolhouse has been able to reopen after COVID, so that's been great. And they're able to um, service not just our students, but service students across Lake County. And it's our fourth graders that have historically, as you all know, uh, made their way through the Little Red Schoolhouse.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve item eight F, Little Red Schoolhouse trustee?
Madam President? Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item eight F, Little Red Schoolhouse trustee.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mrs. Menzer. Discussion? Mr. Tarnellum?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion, motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Madam President. And this is finally our first item under my resolutions that do not require a vote, so um, yeah, right. So this is adoption of policies. Um, this is the second read of changes and additions to board policy. Our school district contr- contracts with NEOLA. And Mr. Murphy, what is the number of districts in NEOLA?
Over five hundred in just in Ohio alone.
Yeah, and there are, put in perspective, six hundred and fourteen districts in Ohio. Um, twice a year, NEOLA publishes updates in order to keep school districts compliant with changes in federal and state laws or government regulations. They also publish special updates to address matters that require more urgent um, consideration. Following the release of each update, we work with an associate who provides consultation to review and explain the rationale for the changes and answer questions about the proposed revisions. And that's Mr. Murphy, who works with them. The process ensures that our policies and guidelines always reflect the most recent updates in laws. When changing policies, they must be presented or read at two board meetings. So this is the second board meeting. This evening, we are presenting, again, the second of these, and we, uh, and obviously seeking approval. That's it? Oh, that's right. I told you, and then I don't, I stopped.
It's like there's one more.
Superintendent Resolution, um, item H is the personnel agenda. Each month, the changes in the district personnel are required to be approved by the Board of Education. These changes will include retirements, hiring of new personnel, supplemental contracts, for example, and some of the payments made to people that have potentially worked like an athletic event, for example. All persons are employed pending receipt of satisfactory records from multiple background checks and verification of the appropriate required certifications or licensers. And on this agenda, you'll see examples of these, and there's too many to mention. Um, and so I don't want to leave people out, but I would, I would ask you to take a look at this a little more closely and look at some of the people that are retiring. There's some impact people uh, that are retiring and, and God bless them that they get to retire. But it does, some of them are, all of them are difficult to replace, so um, so you might want to take a look at that, and if you happen to run into them, congratulate them.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item nine, uh, nine A, our meeting notification. And I did not have an opportunity to get my computer open so that I could read. Thank you. We came from one meeting straight to the next. Thank you. So the next regular board meeting, Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Monday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty, at seven PM at the Administrative Building at three five three five three Curtis Boulevard in Eastlake. And then we'll move on to item ten, our consent calendar, item A, adoption of consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Roskus.
I'll make a motion to approve item ten A, adoption of consent calendar.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Discussion? Mr. Tarnellum?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
We'll now move on to item eleven, other business. Item A is to adjourn to executive session. Give me one second here. This would be to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Do I hear a motion to approve item eleven A?
Madam President?
Yes.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Okay. And I feel it's important to note that there'll be no action taken after the executive session. So we wish you all a wonderful evening. Mr. Tarnellum?
Mr. Boxler?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
We're adjourned into executive session at nine thirty-eight PM.
Thank you.